Three resolutions coming out of executive session. The first, P twenty-nine, professional personnel. We have resolved upon the recommendation of Dr. Paul J. Catalino, superintendent of schools, that the board hereby appoints Alyssa Alveda to a four-year probationary term as director of teaching and learning in the tenure area of director of teaching and learning, effective September thirteenth, twenty eighteen, and terminating on September twelfth, twenty twenty-two, at an annual salary of one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, professional S.C. award certification. I'll entertain a motion.
So is I.
Any discussion?
I'm very happy to see I've taken up all of this position.
Thank you.
I am as well. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
And just to kind of, everyone, I know we all, everyone knows Dr. Alveda, but we are very pleased that she's decided to move into this position. She's been assistant director position for a couple of years now and is impressive in her, in her quality and her vigorous work. She's a very, she's just a great administrator, so I'm really pleased that she's stepped up and will be helping Mr. Verge and Ms. Bobble and Dr. Felsella in the teaching department. So congratulations, and I'll say welcome, but you've been here for fourteen years.
Welcome, yes.
Sixty.
I'm just gonna do it a little bit. I'm getting feedback and I'm...
It's probably where my speaker...
No, I think, we had it last meeting too. I think it's just turned up a little too...
What do you think, Derek?
Because I think your feet are determined.
Yeah. Okay, next, Resolution BOE twenty-three. We have resolved that the board hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to sign an employment-related agreement with employee number three-three-five, dated August twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, as presented to the board at this meeting. A copy of said agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. Entertain a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, and our last resolution, twenty-eighteen BOE twenty-four. We have resolved that the Board of Education extends the voluntary paid administrative leave for employee number three-six-one-nine until October tenth, twenty eighteen. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Which brings us to public participation. And we have one person signed up for public participation. I'll remind you, the policy is attached to the podium. We discuss issues, not people. And if you have two minutes, or more quick, let me know when you're approaching the two minutes. Please speak directly into the mic, so people can hear. This is Zoe Dunne.
Thank you. Hi, I'm the proud parent of the George Washington Montessori first grader, and George Washington is a gem and a unique addition to our strong public school system in Kingston. In light of this, I come to respectfully this evening with three questions and requests. Our principal, Valerie Henham, has announced that this will be her final year at GW Montessori. And as I know you know, she's quite an amazing person. I've never seen someone who shakes the hand or gives a hug every single child, every morning, and speaks to them by name. She's fantastic. She was integral to initiating the Montessori program at GW and has been an ardent supporter and sometimes defender of the program. There is concern in the GW Montessori community that a certified Montessori administrator may not exist in the Kingston school system. We respectfully ask Dr. Catalino and the school board to consider at minimum a county-wide and possibly a statewide search of both private and public resources. It is critical that we bring a certified Montessori administrator to this position to maintain and grow the work that Val developed, and we respectfully ask for your feedback on the topic. Second, on a radio show earlier this year, Dr. Catalino suggested that consideration was being given to bringing fifth and sixth graders to GW Montessori. This would certainly help with the crowded conditions of Edson and even Miller, not to mention extending the reach of the social-emotional development and Montessori method through those critical middle school years. We ask that Dr. Catalino and the school board provide the community with an update to that opportunity. Third, earlier in the year, following the release of this study, there was a mention at Copy and Conversation of the returning of the three-year-old program to the children's house. This is a program of interest to much of the GW Montessori community, and we'd appreciate enough that I'll know as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunne. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this point? Okay, there are no one else. I will turn the floor over to Dr. Catalino for his superintendent's report.
Okay, not really, I'll write the superintendent's report, and I know that's not usually the case, but it is, and just a very, I'm pulling together the data on the first week of school, which I don't have to give to you at this, at this point, but I will provide it to the board and I'll bring it for the public, actually, with class sizes and this, because we have a lot of fluctuation this week, obviously, but I will say we, we open school, as you all know. We had a very successful first day of school. I think we only had one child lost for a very short time, and he was actually in the building. So that, that was good. That was very good. And Dr. Felsella found him. She called through the phone and said, "This is the first time I've ever lost a student in a building." So we did, we did news, but again, we asked for patience, and I know it's been, we're coming on, you know, we've been in school for a week now, but I, we asked for parents for patience around, around the busing. I know, you know, there's, there's new drivers in many buses, there's still new students getting onto buses, and, you know, one hug at each stop for ten stops is one minute before the bus gets to that last stop for a kindergartner who's getting on the bus or first or second or third grader for them, or twelfth grader, who knows? So there's, so just, just some patience, and we do have some road closures and things like that, that we're navigating around. And once, once the drivers and the routers find their way, we'll be much more reliable, but just, I asked for some patience and understanding from our parents of students who ride buses. I'm a broken record about this, you know, we have thirty-five buses on, one hundred and thirty-five buses on the road in the morning, one hundred and thirty-five buses on the road at night, and we have, we, our bus drivers drive more than two million miles every school year. So, you know, it takes a little bit to get geared up to make that happen, you know, kind of directly on time, so we ask for that. Also, I know last week we had, you know, kind of historic heat in, in schools, and I know there was a lot of conversation, and I know a couple of school districts locally didn't let out early, and I know there's, there's some talk about, you know, should we bring them out early? Again, you know, it is weather is weather. It's, we have, we have requirements as far as when we, when we're supposed to be in school. There's the, you know, there's always, you know, I always tell them, one of the hardest things I do is close or delay schools for so many reasons. It's the same thing around, around whether or not, you know, we propose to delay school or heat. What I'll be doing is, and a lot of people know, there are some new regulations around the number of days in school, and they're no longer using days, they're using hours, and there's a lot of different rules going on. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna work with our communicator's person to put together kind of a, get rid of the state ed kind of jargon, really put it, just an easy-to-read guide for parents as to what things mean when we close school and what that means around maybe loss of vacation days and things like that. You know, again, we don't, we have regulations around how cold it can be in a building, we don't have regulations about how warm it can be in a building. I know that's being proposed, you know, that the NICE is proposing that. It's a hard, it's a hard one, you know, we've been, we've been doing school in September and June since we've been doing school, and it's been hot sometimes in September and hot sometimes in June, all that time. It's just one of those things, we try to have gate, now gate and stage block. So that's the very beginning superintendent's report on opening week report, and I'll have more data next week, or two weeks. Yes, Dr. Chilwell?
I've received a lot of questions about sports buses, you talked about competition, and I think we have this competition every single year. So, um, what's up for your sports buses?
Sports buses are just like the regular buses. I mean, we, you know, it takes a little while to get everything the way it needs to go. I know Mr. Silverstein is here today, and Ms. Falcon spent a lot of time yesterday and today figuring out what the heck is happening. Yes. And I think we may be getting it straightened out, but like I said, every year, it's, it's a, it's a timing thing, kids don't know where to stand, there's, there's, you know, coaches practice too long or let practice out too early, and there's kids, you know, we have students all over the place, so there's a lot of different things to, to, to harass. It's different every year, that's the...
My parents didn't make it to practice the other day.
Yeah, and, and, you know, so it's different every year, because we're using different venues. So we didn't used to use graves for any high school fields, now we're using graves for high school sports. So a lot of those things, so a lot of those things are kind of new and we're feeling them out. Anytime we put buses on the road, we need a little bit of time to, to, you know, iron it out and get it just right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next in the superintendent's report is our report on our new mental health curriculum, and that's our athletic director and director of physical education and health. Resumé.
Good evening, everyone. It's our pleasure to provide an update on mental health education in the Kingston City School District. Mental health as defined by the World Health Organization is a state of well-being in which every individual realizes their own potential, can cope with the normal stresses of life, can work productively and fruitfully, and is able to make a contribution to their community. This topic is nothing new to the Kingston City School District. It's, it's part of a bigger picture and a bigger plan, is part of our DTSDE rubric, defines our optimal conditions specifically to tenant five with student social and emotional developmental health. These, mental health is just another component of those social and emotional components that do contribute to the development and lead to healthy relationships in a safe, respectful environment that is conducive for learning for all. Mental health is more than just illness. It's a continuum of well-being, it's an integral part of overall health, and it's important throughout the life cycle, affecting thinking and learning, feelings and actions that ultimately relate to healthy decision-making. As supported through some of these mental health facts, our tenant five or student social and emotional developmental health is about wellness. It's a state of complete physical, mental, and social well-being. It's not only the absence of disease, it's about the relation of physical health and mental health. Active prevention and caring for mental health promotes resiliency, positive behaviors, and self-care. These all align already with our early intervention theory of action in our district. Kingston City School District currently includes components of mental health in our, in our health education curriculum in our classrooms. This year, there are new statutory provisions that now formalize this particular work. In the purple, you'll see now it's in, in commissioner's regulation in Part one-thirty-five that districts in New York State must include mental health and the relation of physical and mental, uh, mental health, and also designed to enhance student understanding, attitudes, and behaviors that promote health, well-being, and human dignities. It's important to note that there are actually existing schools and districts throughout New York State that do, that have not included mental health in their curriculum, unlike Kingston. So we have been a little bit out in front of this, we are, we are fortunate to have so many supports in our school district with our school psychologists, our social workers, our health teachers, physical education teachers, coaches, and mental health supports that we are engaged with, with community partners. With these new provisions, however, it's always a good time to look at what we're doing with some flexibility as, as the new regulations allow to develop and to adapt our curriculum, to make sure that it's aligned to the learning standards and using the resources, and to address the needs that we have here in Kingston. So at this time, our director of health, Mr. Silverstein, will share a little more detail and specific about what we're actually doing in our health classes. You got it.
Good evening. A high school girls' sports team is going, is having a party on this coming Friday night, and in a group text, one of the girls feels pressured to have to then go to that party, something that one of our coaches shared with me. In the middle school, students are changing for physical education very first, for the very first time, and it never changes in a large group setting in a physical education class. These body images, these occur in our phys ed classes all the time. A fourth grader, a fourth grader goes and sits down at a lunch table, and one of the students at that table tells her, "Go sit somewhere else." This happens. This is happening in our school districts, these self-esteem and all these other mental health issues. This is what's going on in schools all across the country. New York State has stepped in and has guided us as, as, as health teachers to now to start to implement some changes, and we have been ahead of the curve. What I have in front of you is what we've done now in the fifth grade, seventh grade, and ninth grade curriculum, written by Lori D. Mercurio, who's our lead teacher for health. And all of these units that I'm gonna speak on briefly are units that we are now implementing here in the Kingston School District. Lessons and topics on conflict resolution, perception, empathy, negotiating, tolerance, labels and stereotypes, assertive skills, bias and prejudice, communication skills, anger management, learning styles, body self-image, self-esteem, peer pressure, self-reflection, interventions, goal-setting and career goals, stress, depression, suicide, grief, violence, and bullying. These are all topics that we are covering starting this year, not that we haven't before, but we're gonna be enhancing those units to make sure our students understand at the new fifth grade level that we're teaching for the very first time, at the seventh grade level, and in our high school level. We are now looking at the entire student and making sure that they're becoming a well-rounded student, understanding the mental health issues that are out there. We want to make sure that physical, mental, social, emotional, and spiritual understanding for our students, all, all under the auspices of the mental health, and we want to make sure that we are covering all of these areas in our, in our lessons and our units within We are now currently reviewing and assessing all of our health education curriculums and aligning that to the new mental health education requirements. We are also building a capacity and strengthening relationships between our educators and providers, our school psychologists, our school social workers, counselors, and school nurses. We're developing school-community partnerships with mental health professionals and organizations. We're reaching out to our own community, and there are lots of professionals out there who can assist us, and we're working with them, and we're starting to move that forward as we speak. We're identifying strategies to engage families and students in supporting mental health and well-being. We're being, uh, so we're supporting a positive school climate and culture, and this year we are leveraging partnerships and building upon those existing resources to develop a sustainable infrastructure for mental health.
It's important to note not only what's going on in the classroom, but like I said earlier, that mental health is on a spectrum of wellness and care, and it's about what goes on in the entire school and the impact that mental health has on the climate and the culture of the school that can significantly impact student achievement. So it's, it's as much about the learning and the outcomes that come with mental health curriculum, but it's also about the impact it has on our climate, on our environment, and the experiences that students have when they're in our schools. So by expanding mental health, we hope that all will become more open to the topic, address the challenges, have a positive impact on a child's awareness for prevention, for treatment, and for that whole stigma of mental health. So what is next? The good news is that New York State has fully embraced this, and they have shown tremendous support for schools and for districts. The state education department, the office of mental health, the mental health association in New York State have all formed together cross-sector, cross-disciplinary partnership, creating an advisory council, and that advisory council has now provided guidance to schools and to districts, and that's been a tremendous support for us here in Kingston. We look forward to using that guidance. One of the most important pieces of that guidance is the mental health, the first bullet, mental health, education, literacy in schools. Also, within that is an instructional framework that we're using, and that's also the link in red there. But this instructional framework is aligned to learning standards with a very specific spoken sequence for all levels. The instructional framework has three themes: self-management, relationships, and resource management of mental health. And you can see all the other next steps that we'll continue to review, the additional resources and best practices already available to us. Certainly take a look at the work that's already in progress with social-emotional learning, with our cultural responsive education, with PBIS, with our restorative practice, our mental health supports that we've already had, and also trauma-sensitive and informed schools, as well as, as, as Mr. Silverstein mentioned, school and community partnerships. And a big one, but not last, is training and professional development for all staff, which is certainly needed. The emphasis is to go beyond classroom instruction and what just happens in our classrooms. Mental health promotes positive school culture and climate, and that's really what tenant five is all about for us, all the work we've been doing in all of those areas. We believe that when young people are educated about mental health, that they will be able to effectively then recognize the signs and symptoms in themselves and in others, and will know where to turn for help. We're also excited and look forward to this October, I think it's October seventeenth, the Mental Health Association in New York State is sponsoring a statewide conference that I'll be attending, that's on, specifically on this topic of advancing mental health in communities and in schools. I believe Mr. Silverstein is attending with me, so we look forward to going there and bringing back more information to share with the district and to take part of our program and showing it forward to education. Any questions?
Mr. Jordan?
Well, I'm delighted that this is, that you've taken on, in the past, mental health, but also embracing the new standards that the state is putting forward. And what occurred to me is, as an ex-teacher, since you're highlighting these very, very sensitive topics for fifth, seventh, and ninth age, and there hasn't been time for probably sufficient staff development yet, I just wonder if you've thought about at least alerting those teachers to the themes that you might be covering at that time, because it's very common for those kids to have something sensitive given to them in health class, and then they run back to their classroom teacher and they're like hysterical about it. So I just think that if you could communicate that to the general population of teachers, it might be helpful in incorporating it until we can get that staff development in place.
Ms. Walden?
I'll echo my thanks to the three of you and to all of our staff. It's great to see that Kingston is being proactive about this, it's so important. A couple of things that come to mind, and I think I know the answer to this, but just for clarification, students do not take health in eighth grade? Why, we're skipping, just because of, okay, I think I knew that, I should know that, having three kids on terms. And my other question would be, in looking at the umbrella, let's say, topics that we cover, I'm sure when you talk about leverage and partnerships, that this is covered, but I'm thinking especially with the younger students, maybe fifth grade moving into a more, a larger and diverse population, the middle school, or a ninth grader moving into the high school. Do we touch upon any of the like L-GBTQ issues or work with that center at all as well?
Yes.
This is Lori D. Mercurio, she's our lead teacher for health.
Hi. Yes, we do cover it very sensitively in the high school level, when we think that they're more mature to handle the material. Some kids do, in the middle school, do bring up these kinds of questions, and we do keep it, you know, open-minded, and we try to keep it at a sensitive level to make sure that we are meeting their answers, and sometimes you have to meet with them after class so that they're not being put in a very uncomfortable situation with so much peer pressure.
Great, I just, I was thinking, you know, sometimes when you're new to a larger population, that's important. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, first, I, we'll just add one of the things, I mean, this is really important, and so important, and glad to see this in our schools. And so, it's so important. So, but a few years ago, we actually had talked about having an L-GBTQ club or some kind in the middle school as kids, you know, seventh and eighth graders are, are starting to explore their sexuality and come into themselves, and so, and it's not, you know, something that kids really talk about. So we had talked, I think I talked to you about it, Catalino, actually, about having some kind of support system available for kids. We were questioning, or we're thinking about their sexuality or, and, you know, a way to support kids who are going through that, because that actually is really the problem we're going through. So we were wondering what we wanted with that.
Well, I mean, I think that was part of our development of this curriculum, most of that, with that conversation. I mean, there is that, the unit that is on kind of that self-awareness and coming into finding, you know, who you are, so that is kind of how we address it. And, you know, on top of this, and I thank just me period of her, her hard work, and I like the volleyball shirt.
I'm a game.
I think it's good, no, I like it. It's excellent. The, outside of that, we have, and you all know this because you pass the budget every year, we have abundant resources around our school psychologists, our social workers, and our guidance people, and we really made a very concerted effort, and this board, two years ago, made a concerted effort to, you know, add on to our social worker positions to make sure that we were able to not only deliver this curriculum, but provide that, that support other than that for our students. So, you know, it's hitting it at two levels, really, on top of the idea that, you know, our, all work with our, with our culturally, you know, our culturally sensitive classrooms and those kind of things, that are not only about, just about race, but they're also about each individual student.
Right, right. And I remember one parent even said to me, I don't have any parent about this, if, if we could, even some visual of students, you know, like a triangle with the, the...
They had them in a high school, I think. Friendly, friendly.
If we could have those in middle school, so they would know where the spaces are, and, you know, that's gotta be a way to say, you know, here's someone that you can talk to if you need to, or something like that.
Yeah, I think that's very helpful.
But I'm, I, I find this really encouraging, and I'm really thrilled about this, and I also love the shirts.
Thank you.
Billy, volleyball. Mr. Jordan?
I had another thought about, is there a parent interaction piece of this, since you're talking about issues that may be sensitive?
Um, I, in the high school, I do five parent homeworks, where the parents actually have to do homework. And it really informs parents with a questionnaire, like there's right now something that went home for the beginning of the school year. Instead of just signing syllabus, it's called getting to know your student, and it really opens up a lot of channel of communication, and the parents have to report back, and they have to actually give their email, and they get into, you know, a blind carbon copy so they can actually see all the different topics that we're covering. Because if you saw with what Mr. Silverstein said up here, that we kind of branch mental health throughout the whole entire semester, so sometimes we might be throwing things in there that could be super sensitive, it's, it's important to keep the parents informed every week with what we're doing.
Do the fifth grade and seventh grade parents also get informed in the summer?
The teachers give out a course syllabus, and that course syllabus gives an idea of when things are being laid out. I mean, I definitely will bring it up at our health department meeting next month, and I will follow up, just like with the glisten stickers, you know, this is what's nice about being here tonight, because we get a lot of good ideas too to bring back to them to try and expand. I mean, we are living in a community right now where things are super hypersensitive. When you're watching television with teenagers, there's all kinds of programs out there. I mean, I just watched a show, I have a student that's in the spectrum, so I've been watching this show called Atypical, which is about a student, you know, in the spectrum, and I was talking about it with the kids today, and sure enough, the sister is exploring her sexuality now. So it's like, it's a very common language to our kids, so being that we're health teachers, they expect us to be the professionals. So we are constantly opening our minds to ideas, to be bringing them back the information, but making sure that it's factual, and that it's not from, you know, some source of media.
I would also just add that this, like I said earlier, doesn't have to just be in isolation, that it connects nicely to the TSD rubric, so when we're planning our family and engagement activities, whether... So when we're planning our family engagement activities, or on whatever the topics are, this would be another perfect opportunity to blend in mental health, education topics with those efforts.
It's tricky, because you're talking about school climate, that the school climate is going to be something where everybody's engaged in creating that positive school climate, the families, the students, the teachers, certainly. And many of these topics are going to be reinforced in other areas, not just in the health curriculum, so that's wonderful. See, some of these that, you know, we have in policy, we've been discussing, also, things that get discussed in class, sometimes when you're setting out the parameters for that class, you know, you're talking about peer pressure, you're talking about learning styles, I think this is wonderful. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see what professional development looks like.
And I'd just like to add that the guidance that we've already received and what I've looked through, in terms of the framework, they advise districts to pursue social and emotional learning, PBIS, cultural responsive education. So it was literally as if, you know, we were reading all of these things, these initiatives that we are already, you know, a big part of. So that's a very important part, that this is just not, not something that just happens in specific health classrooms, that this is something that we all have a responsibility as people that, you know, serve and work here and have our children come here.
Mr. Johnson.
I'd like to echo this up to my colleagues on the board about this. I'm very proud of the progress that we've made in the last two or four years in Ten and Five. And I think that one thing that really comes through in this presentation that you did tonight, is that you're embracing this as an opportunity, rather than tolerating it as a nuisance or mandate. And, you know, this is, by paying attention to mental health, you know, that's the only way we're going to get to the goal of, or even approach the goal of a hundred percent graduation, because there are so many kids that have problems, mental health issues that manifest themselves in high school, that without this attention and focus on it, they're not going to graduate.
Mr. Jordan.
I would also say that you're contributing to the security of our schools, because the, you know, we can lock and build and block and do all of that, but if the kids are not feeling safe and happy and well, then that doesn't really matter. So this is a great investment, and I really applaud you in anything that I can do.
And a part of my, this might be self-serving, but I'm gonna do it anyway, the, you know, we've been talking about mental health for, well, before, mental health was cool, as, you know, they can say other things. But we've been talking about it, we've been investing in it, this is something that we are committed to. I know, I mean, two members on our board are on the Mental Health Association Board Directors as well, and, I mean, this is, this is something we've been talking about, we've been moving forward with. And I think part of the idea of this mandate being an opportunity is, we didn't see it really as a mandate, we saw this as just restructuring what we were already doing, repackaging it, putting it out there. So I think it's a, you know, it's, I'm proud of the fact that we've been talking about this, and now everyone's saying, like Mr. Burge said, they're telling us all these things that we should do to enhance our program, and we've been doing them for a few years. So I think that that shows our focus in this area. And again, I go back to the board's commitment a few years ago, the recommendation to put some, you know, more support people into the buildings to help our kids. So I think I'm really pleased with it, and I'm thankful to Mr. Silverstein, I always come to Silverstein like Bruce, and this is D. McCurio, and I didn't realize that Mr. Burge would be presenting, and Mr. Burge as well for presenting.
Can I just say one thing? I also wanted to mention that we're kind of branching out to the school. We're going to be doing the wellness committee, started up at the high school, where the kids get to have a quiet place during the cafeteria, because sometimes it's like over, you know, stimulating for them. But we're also bringing on board the Benedictine Hospital, we're doing something called Nanny, where we're going to be offering, you know, things through our well workshop, but also bringing in like co-teaching. I remember when I started on the BLT for Miller, I don't know, 2002, I worked really, really hard with Ten and Five existing, with the, you know, health piece. And I just want to say, I'm a parent of this district, and I could not be more honored to be able to have my kids go to this district. And I think we're very fortunate to get the kind of support that we actually get. So I know you guys are thanking us, but we also owe you guys a big thank you too, because if somebody was on the outside like me, listening right now, they'd be like, wow, you have a strong foundation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
One last comment. I would like to echo all my colleagues about it, when I said I thank for the presentation, but I'd like to make a couple of, the interactions, like sex, of the curriculum, will have an impact, one number one priority, discourse suspensions. And if the kids learn to, you know, live together, definitely be beneficial for everybody.
I will, one last comment on this, I will compliment Mr. Silverstein, because he got splashed by a truck today and ruined his clothes, and he had to get out and get his new suitcase.
Thank you.
Good job. I have a similar experience, my first year, and I won't share at this time, but maybe probably. And just to end the superintendent's report, we have our friends from Mahar, are from BBS, CSR, should talk about Mahar. For those of you who don't notice already, Harley is the new Robin.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to switch notes here from the high school that we just finished, which looks spectacular, by the way, and I'm glad that it worked out really well in the first few weeks of school, over to Mahar. So backtracking a little bit, contracts were awarded on August 2nd at that board meeting, and four different contracts were awarded. We have a general works package that was awarded to Eris Contracting Company, they're out of Poughkeepsie. A plumbing contract as well, that was given to Chris and Foley Brothers Plumbing and Heating, they did a lot of work over at the high school, still right out of Albany. The mechanical works contractor, Tina Gallego, also out of the Albany area. And the electrical work is being completed by Neil Electric, out of the Poughkeepsie area as well. In addition to the base work, that was on drawings, four different alternates were accepted. These are inclusive of the new walkway cover that's going at the new entrance in the rear of the building, that will now be the new main entrance. Also accepted were additional window replacements in the 1917 portion of the building. And then the boiler will also, the existing boiler is going to be removed and replaced, that is two separate alternates together. Contractors started setting up on site on August 20th, just getting themselves oriented with the building, and they also began some light demolition, pretty much anything that they can get rid of that doesn't affect abatement, they've done, which is removing whiteboards, tack boards, door frames, taking out unit ventilators, plumbing fixtures, and some lighting units here and there. Abatement, they mobilized on site this past Monday, setting up their containment areas that nobody's allowed to go in unless you have all the certifications. But they actually started their abatement today, and that work will be completing in the beginning of October. And after that, the remainder of the demolition will be complete, the heavier stuff such as wall demo and everything up in the abatement area. Outside of the construction area, project managers for these contractors are sending in some middles, really fast so far, impressed to see how many things are coming in, and they're working on procuring all their materials, so when the time comes, they can move forward with everything, we're not held up by that. So that's just a brief update, but here's some pictures to show some of the demolition going on so far. In one of the classrooms, they've taken out the unit ventilators right here, and they've taken out a lot of the window framing, a lot around the windows. They've also taken off some door frames, this is in the 1948, 18?
You're talking to the 1874.
1874 portion of the building. And they've also taken out all the bathroom fixtures so far, so already starting to see a lot of changes over there. All of the chalkboards and tack boards that are supposed to come off are off of the walls right now, along with shelving that is, that were underneath windows and underneath whiteboards in different closets. Again, just another room showing some of the demolition that's been done so far. Right now, in this specific room, this was taken in the other day, but all of the window furnishings are down as well. Again, some more chalkboard, I'm sure they had some more pictures to show you guys. And they've also taken off any wall hangers and coat racks and little things here and there that can, that are not impacting any of the abatement. That is all I have for you guys tonight. Does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you.
No?
No, I have no questions for you. I was going to make a comment to the board, I just realized now that they already renamed the pre-K or the centers, it's going to be the administration building. Are we going to rename the school? We've been, I did not remember my high school.
We've been bouncing that around, and we thought we would try to do some combination of things like maybe the CIONE administration offices within the Mahar Elementary School, and then Mahar pre-K, you know, pub, whatever. So we're, we're going to come to the board with a recommendation, you know, when we, when we have everything there, we'll come to the board with a recommendation as well, so there's a lot to do.
So we'll just have to remember that the BOSI's, you know, not their center, the Center for Innovative Teaching and Learning at Mahar.
At Mahar.
The CIONE administration offices at Mahar, you know, it's kind of like the.
Be a long title.
No. Things are moving along, it's kind of the boring part right now, as we rip things apart, and also being buildings that are a hundred plus years old, we're uncovering things, so, you know, we're, we're on the fly and resolving some of the unknowns that have been uncovered, but it's moving along.
No time capsule?
I think we haven't.
If you borrow from 1847, I don't know.
I have to read the letter to the superintendent that was in the 1932 time capsule, I haven't done that yet, I gotta do that.
This is from.
The time capsule in the high school, there's a letter to the superintendent. It's hoping like open in the school.
But if you find anything cooler, time capsule.
Do you have any time capsules that you can find here? I think this was in the, what, 1838 supposedly, or something like that?
If you don't find one, we'll have to make one.
Thank you. That concludes the superintendent's report.
So, the next order, this is the consent agenda. Are there any resolutions, any requests you would like removed from the consent agenda? It's going to entertain a motion. Someone, taking any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, that is, signify by saying aye. Oppose, abstentions. In the quid pro quo, we have, yes, we have one donation. Mrs. Jordan, can you read the donation?
Certainly, we gratefully accept the donation for John F. Kennedy and George Washington and all of these schools, a generous donation from Mr. Ronald Woods in the amount of $1,000. I believe it was split between the two schools. Thank you very much.
And I will just jump in and say, Mr. Woods does that every year, every year he makes a donation to them, because he's a member of our state commission.
Yes, I would like to add that Mr. Woods is a wonderful committee member, he was out of any sort, he's been a member of the community and the schools for years now. Next week, I'll give him a million, I'll personally thank Mr. Woods.
He's a very good man, very good, quick supporter.
And which brings us to committee reports, and reporting out this week, first at the facilities committee. The facilities committee met on September 5th, because with the beginning of school, the first day of school, we did have some principals absent, and understandably so, because it was the first day of school. But Ms. Yamaniski and, you know, let's get this. And the architect from CSR, she was a character.
You don't like camera, don't you?
So I'm sorry, I want to say Donald, but I have not. Yeah. I apologize, I won't find out. But they essentially covered what we covered, minus the report from Mr. Plappert. Mr. Plappert told us about all of the wonderful work that his staff had done over the summer to get the schools ready. We talked a little bit about the ribbon cutting at the high school, that was very exciting. And I should mention here, if somebody reminded me, someone came to my home and put an envelope in my mailbox with something that was dropped from the time capsule. So I haven't unsealed it. It was you?
No.
I haven't unsealed it yet, but I will bring it in, and you can unseal it here. So, yeah, it was something that was dropped inadvertently, so I have it in an envelope on my coffee table for him, and I will bring it back very shortly. And then we did talk a little bit about the five-year capital plan, and Shippo is reviewing the window design for the JFK building, so.
And Edson now, I'm sorry.
And it's one.
And Edson now.
And Edson now. They are identical buildings, so I was wondering when they were going to include that, I was puzzled as to why they didn't include the both. But, so we'll give you an update on that next month, probably at the second meeting in October. And that's all I have to report. Do you have any questions to ask?
So Shippensburg's the safest location, they're holding it from like 1968 or wherever it is, and that is now restored.
Yeah, approaching 50 years old.
Once they, once they get close to 50 years old, they start to.
Waiting, yes.
I guess the architect is a noted local architect that built all those buildings, but I believe before the things that are all.
At first, they only noted JFK, and I, which prompted me to ask, why not Edson too? Because buildings are identical.
Right, and then we made, they kept asking that also. Then we asked that, and they said, oh, you're right. We kind of worked in reverse.
There you go. And so I will turn the floor over to Mrs. Allen to the policy committee.
Policy committee met on Friday, September 7th, and the minutes are attached to the agenda, courtesy of Mrs. DeParno. And we have on here this evening, two first readings, one is for policy 1400, which we do have, but there are some suggested changes from the School Board Association, minor changes, and the policy is public complaints. Really, we just added some of the new titles, specifically deputy superintendent, that have come out of our reorganization. And then on the second part of the policy, there's language regarding Title I, or academic intervention services, that must be included in there. So that's one of the first readings. The second policy after the first reading is policy 2310, regular board meetings. And there's just two additions there, once again, speaking to technology, that the meeting must be published, the place and time on the district website, which we do, and specific website information regarding the live stream over the internet. So those are the two that. So those are the two that are for first readings. We also looked at two other policies that we made very slight changes to, so I believe the agreement is we're adopting these tonight. Specifically, policy 9215, regarding our non-aligned employees, the only change was one that we had agreed on, and the board had actually passed, so the policy needs to reflect that. It's just a change from $2,500 to $3,000 regarding term of your salary. And then the next policy that's up for adoption is 6690, which is regarding the Audit and Finance Committee. Once again, the only change, and this came directly from the Audit and Finance Committee, is a request, administer other related duties as prescribed by the Board of Education, including a review of all pilots and deviated pilots made known to the district, since that's something that seems to have been arising, and it makes sense to go through the Audit and Finance Committee. So with that said, I'd like to move those two policies for adoption.
Right.
6690 and 9215.
Any questions?
So I just wanted, I tried to find the change in 9215, 9215 on non-aligned, I couldn't find it, but it's just that one figure from...
Yes, it's on, it's on there, it's, that's, that's it. It's actually stricken, and the figure is in bold on page three of four.
Under, under, under Article Five retirement, under Article Four, I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor of those policy changes, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Collins.
Sure.
Our next meeting is October...
October 5th, is it? Is that Friday?
Yes.
Of course, Friday, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Our next discussion is on NISP resolutions. Now, NISP resolutions were attached to the library this week, and I did send out an email to request that you review them. You do not have to vote on them tonight, or if you prepare to, we can go right ahead. It's a little bit shorter than it usually is. The only thing I need to ask you is, do you have any amendments that you would like to suggest to any of the resolutions that are being put forth by NISP? Because if you do, and you want to get them into the delegates guide, they have to reach the NISP headquarters by September 21st, which is a week from Friday, this coming Friday, so September 21st, to appear in the guide. You can still make amendments to resolutions, but they would have to be made by the delegate from the floor, and they would have to be given in writing at the beginning of the session. So there's no rush to do this. How many people feel prepared to vote on the resolutions this evening?
I just, I do have a suggestion for one, I don't know if it's a fugue to amend it or not, but for number 11, which was increasing state federal funding for dedicated funding for school safety programs, staff and equipment, I wondered if that could include prevention programs directed at social emotional development and mental health programs? Because we all know that that contributes to school safety too, but it's not specified in the, I don't think it's specified in the proposed amendment.
Do, did you come prepared with language you'd like to suggest?
No, I did not. Well, don't say.
We could still go from floor, but...
I could work on it if people thought it was appropriate. So just adding that dimension around. Yeah. I mean, I think that's, that's, especially... Well, because then we could get more funding for those things that we're focusing on, and that'd be nice for town. Okay.
Just a support of national, state and federal funding.
No, it does not. Well, you have to remember that, in NISP capacity, they may not get...
Right, I know, it doesn't mean anything, but it just sets their agenda for...
So you would like to propose it from the floor, so wait, hold off a minute.
I'd like Danielle to propose it from the floor.
You would like our board to propose it from the floor, excuse me, yes.
Awesome.
Yes?
I think, I can make so if you're comfortable with that. It just seems that we keep talking about, why should we eliminate the possibility of getting increased funding for those programs?
Are you, do you have language yet, or you wanna look at it?
Well, I just said to include prevention programs directed to social emotional development and mental health programs. Is that sufficient?
Sorry, speak to what you were saying before about that, you had to mention the safety. Right. Did you get that?
I don't have that.
Mr. Jordan, can you repeat that? Give us the resolution number.
So if you look at the original resolution, it says resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports additional state and federal funding, which would be dedicated for school safety programs, staff and equipment. Then I would put, and include prevention programs directed to social, emotional development And include prevention programs directed toward social, emotional development and mental health programs.
You got it now?
Yep.
Okay, so that's the resolution number. Are there any other resolutions that anyone would like to amend?
I don't have an amendment, I have a disagreement with one there.
One thing did not, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
We need to talk on that here, or?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we'll just have to... Yeah. Okay, so can we handle that as a consent agenda? We can't suggest amendments to the bylaws right now, but resolutions, yes. Did you take a look at the resolutions that were sunsetting? The first two resolutions, they're sunsetting, we want to extend them. There are two they're sunsetting, we're intending to extend, sixteen that they have approved or provided rationale, and then two that they have rejected. Is this a collective order?
I have a question about the kindergarten. I, I have two questions and one requirement.
So the sunsetting resolutions, the first, the first one deals with legislative regulatory mandates that would oppose new unfunded or underfunded mandates. So we have, they were on record as objecting, so the New York State School Board Association Board Directors, June, yeah, June 9th, very beginning, right up to board, okay, the table contest. Sunsetting positions. We'll discuss that in the afternoon. That new unfunded, underfunded mandate should not be enacted. So, so yes, were they with that, or sunsetting? Your next?
I mean, I think, for instance, this mental health, are there, is there any money coming from that?
There isn't really a change in the law.
Yeah, it's not about legislation. I just laid open and write regulations. I mean, that is, the mental health curriculum developing, there was an unfunded mandate, we didn't, we didn't receive any extra, you know, money for that, so, but...
Philosophically, yes.
I mean, technically, behind every mandate is a good intention, for the most part. Not always a smart intention, but a good intention, and there's, so there's, and there's very rarely money to go behind them, you know, so I don't know if it's a, there's arguments to be made to say that some legislation, some mandates, funded or unfunded, are positive, have positive impact on our students' life.
The other thing is, it doesn't make any difference what law is...
No, it doesn't.
If the state education department feels that there's a mandate that needs to be made, they'll do it.
So how many people would support that, support that statement, that the New York State School Boards Association opposes any legislative regulatory mandates that would oppose new unfunded or underfunded mandates? How many agree with that?
Philosophically, I agree, because I think they should always provide them.
They should probably.
They should always provide them.
Okay. Alright, so, seven one, so that's the answer, I'm sorry.
While everyone is listening to this, I'll just say, of course, for, for the argument or anything.
And the second one is, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports legislation at the state level to hold school districts financially harmless whenever they experience the unanticipated significant loss of revenue due to tax surcharge cases, or the unexpected loss of a significant portion of the value of their taxable property. I, I would agree with that. So how many people agree with that?
No.
That's your answer. Okay, alright, now, the sixteen that they recommended were amending only number 11? Okay, and we just added the language that would allow us to spend it in other ways as well.
I have a question.
Yes.
But, did you get your question sent in yet?
I'm sorry, well, she, she's on the ones that we, that were not recommended, which are on the recommended.
Okay, on the ones, you have one on the ones that are recommended.
Are recommended, okay, sorry, I misunderstood, then I, it's not...
I have a question and one comment.
Okay.
So my first question is about, is on some number seventeen, is this page eighteen? Or this is, this is my question. Supporting legislation that would substantially increase the earning limitation for retired police and the workforce for officers who serve as school resource officers. There's a cap at 30,000. I don't think I knew that.
Isn't that true pretty much all retirees?
Everybody's, I know that the truth is...
Yeah, teaching and...
So I...
Right.
So I'm not sure that I would agree with the passing of that. Well, I mean, how could we do that?
Well, did you read rationale?
No. Well, the rationale is just that, that it's, it's an important resource. The benefits for all stakeholders are voluminous, which I think some people will dispute, but I, so why, I don't understand how we can do something like this, then.
I don't understand why, I have a question about that too. Why is it under our purview? It seems to me that's a contractual thing that the police should be advocating for, not teachers, or not the school boards, right?
Right. I, I actually pulled that one too, because, and I think that you'd have to ask for a special release, I'm trying to think of the term, the writers, you know, so you're right, I think that's out of our purview. For example, the officer, I think, would have to ask their retirement system for a special dispensation.
Right, to put it back to the big deal.
Exactly.
It is.
And, and don't forget, all of these, I mean, I'm always drawn back to the language, resolve that NISP supports legislation that would, I mean, it's, it's very, you know, if and or hypothetical, I guess.
It is always hypothetical, but we make a standard, we don't.
Exactly, exactly.
I think that's what they're supposed to do, so I, to me, this one is hypothetical.
So, I hear you're concerned, and you think they're overstepping, NISP's overstepping, so...
Well, I, I just am uncomfortable speaking to it, because I think if they're gonna focus on that, then there's something in education that they're not focusing on, and I'd rather they put their efforts in that.
Okay, so how many people would vote yes on resolution 17? Am I supposed to vote no? No one, so how many are voting no? Okay, so, alright, resolution 17, and your other question is on the...
Now I switch to the not voted.
Okay, and Suzanne was working on, thought, author one that they were recommending.
I was just wondering, on number four, about the earlier start receiving state aid, they're supporting the idea of paying, of allowing state aid for days before September 1. Does that mean that you'd have more flexibility in creating your calendar generally? If you wanted to create something...
Okay, I'll read, resolve that New York State School Boards Association supports legislative proposals that would allow districts to adopt an earlier start instructional year, with those dates being eligible for state aid. So we could get state aid before the playdate, then?
Yes, so yes, the answer to your question is yes. I would like to see it extend as the last day of, but that doesn't...
Right, I'd like to...
On the auto end as well.
...to equal a calendar, with this.
So would you like it amended, and beyond June 30th?
Yes.
Okay, so you wanna amend number four, to read...
It's not June 30th, it's actually beyond the last day of Regent's Exam. So after the last day of Regent's Exams, right then, if we were short on days, or we were short on hours, we would not, we were done. We can't use any days after that to, to make up for...
To make up the 900 hours?
Yeah. And also, it just would give us more flexibility, I mean, I think that the, the, create a calendar like that, I mean, I understand the idea around the high schools, because with Regent's Exam thing over there, or maybe your graduates, seniors and things aren't as invested, but there's no Regent's Exam K through, you know, A.
Okay, so you would like it, resolve that New York State School Boards Association supports legislative proposals that would allow districts to adopt an earlier start the instructional year, with those dates being eligible for state aid, and would also allow for extending the school year beyond the last Regent's Exam.
Yes.
Okay? Okay, so with the amendment, how...
Can I make a comment on this?
Yes, go ahead.
So since the, the top, so the, since the hours, since the requirements are no longer days, but they're hours.
Right.
This doesn't make sense for you, to say that, I mean, the state aid should be based on hours.
But it's, yeah, and it's still, the hours represent the equivalent of 180 days, the way that it's, the way that it's packaged, but I think, you know, giving us that more, you know, giving us, giving us more time in the, in the fall and in the spring to accumulate those hours slash days would be helpful.
Or make them up, because if we...
Right, yes.
If we didn't have the time in, for some unknown reason, who knows what they are, we would be able to extend the school year beyond the last Regent's Examination to make up that time for you, so that the students got credit for the year.
And we got A.
And we get A. Does, but it doesn't accomplish what they really should be after, which is, any calendar
should be able to be submitted, no matter what day of the year it is, to give school districts an opportunity to create maybe a more useful school year. So why don't they just, you know, allow legislation for anything that would count if the school wants to do like a ten-week on, two-week off, all year count it? So this doesn't do that, does it?
So, maybe it would be... I'd like at the beginning of doing that, if we, if we got state aid, we're waiting for Labor Day and after the last...
Then we'll wait another hundred years. I, I mean, why don't we just say that...
We don't, you know...
I think it's totally different person.
An illegitimate...
I think it's a different person, it's all together.
Yeah, okay.
Which doesn't mean you can't propose it.
Twelve-months full year.
With someone on the floor.
Say it.
I, I just, I did...
Yeah, I think this is about the difference we're talking about.
So...
The flexibility, the twelve-months full year.
Exactly.
But in the interim, this might take a while, because it's, you know, an ocean liner term, can we request this amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, so how many people are as favor of the proposed resolution four? Okay, so how many people are in favor of, uh, the, the post-resolution four amended to read, um, and would also allow for, I just said, to extend it beyond the last day of the Regent's Exam?
And, and also allow for extending the school year beyond the last Regent's Exam.
Thank you, that makes more sense than this rule. Thank you very much. So, how many people are in favor of it, the way Camille ran it? All right, it's your name again. Good. All right, are there any other resolutions besides four and eleven that you would like amended, in the ones that are recommended by NISP? Resolution seventeen, instead?
No. I'm just reading, all right.
Yes.
Thirteen?
Thirteen? Resolution thirteen.
Piggybacking transportation.
Getting there. "A resolution of the New York State School Boards Association supports legislation that would allow for piggybacking transportation services."
Mr. Olson would like to get a description?
Sure. Districts, um, today try to work with each other to, um, to maximize our transportation dollar by, um, you know, if we have someone going to Batavia, and Sorgary has someone going to Batavia, if we put together a contract together, we can share one bus and go to Batavia. But, um, if contracts are already in place, and then something happens during the year, you can't just sort of say, hey, listen, we'll help you, you know, by piggybacking, so to speak, on a sort of more, I mean, a formal way for us, but not a formal way with the state. The state likes to have everything under contract, and it's gonna be you and Sorgary, you both have to be on that contract and everything. So, it'll, it'll allow the districts some more flexibility with respect to working together to use your transportation in the most effective way that you can.
And frequently, we do have that happen in the middle of the school year, where we're sending a bus to, say, Vanderheiden in Albany, and Sorgary gets a student who goes there, and they would like, well, we already have the contract, because they can piggyback and share the expense with us, and cut, you know, and cut the cost, but we're not allowed to do that. This, this resolution is, yeah, this resolution is promoting doing that, which used to be able to.
Okay, having heard the explanation, how many people are in favor of resolution thirteen?
No.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other resolutions that you need one amended that are recommended by, or to make comments or ask questions about?
Resolution twenty, the one struck, for the key government.
Yeah, those are the ones that, um, were not recommended, so we're, we're gonna get to them, nineteen, twenty. But of the ones that are recommended. All right. Okay. So, um, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, we have amended resolutions four and eleven. We have decided to vote no on resolution seventeen, because this was overstepping. And the rest of the ones that are recommended were voting yes. Did I sum that up?
Yes.
Okay. Very wonderful. So, that's what we will direct our delegate to do. And now we'll get into the ones that were not recommended. Okay, now, Dr. Jacobowitz had a question, and Mr. Michael.
So, this is a real question, this is another dream of mine. Um, number nineteen, which is the first one.
Yeah.
Is about, um, requiring, uh, school board members to, to complete training sessions on cultural competency and, um, strategizing about potential actions and disproportionality. Um, and I think that's a good idea, actually. I think, given the changing demographics of New York State students, um, I think that this could be an important addition to school board training. So, I actually think that we should, it should be a yes.
Well, there, this will take place, you know, take the training, do office of training.
Well, this would be a doctor.
Yes, already.
We have to do governments and fiscal responsibility.
And they would, and that would, you know, they would create a model, or they provide it.
You would like to add the, the cultural, um, competency.
I just am having a thing with Dr. Jacobowitz today, I guess, because I have written the same thing, that I thought it was valuable, but I understand why they don't want a mandated training. I was wondering if, if it could be part of the initial mandated training for every board.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, we have to do that training anyway, why wouldn't they have a component from that?
So that they add, add cultural competence and to the.
So that it would be included in the initial mandate or.
All right, so we have to, I'm arguing that, which, the evidence, or, or additional modules?
Additional modules.
So, we'll go from twelve hours to eighteen, essentially.
Whatever is.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that would be one, I mean, that would be essentially the same as this, right? Required training, so.
Yeah.
Adding.
Yes, right.
So, we're currently, we, we are required six hours, and government six hours of fiscal responsibility initially, which one would work? This would add to its cultural competency, another six hours.
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think it should define how long it is, but it should be a module that gets added.
Yeah, I don't think that's specific, but the deliverance.
Right, okay, so.
The instruction that's.
All right, so the proposal, resolution nineteen should be considered, and that's gonna have the area from the floor, because that one, and this one, but you just step up to microphone and say, you want to speak in favor of this? Dr. Wilson.
Well, I was, I was gonna say, what's of this is a ratio that designed to legislature, so, which, there's other thing I think to do with this, it's all about NISP itself and school district. I mean, that's what I understand, so I don't know if, if you have a key.
No, because we have mandated a training that I think you have to, I think that's legislative, isn't it? That every board member has to have that initial mandated training. So, we're just suggesting that within that training, there be included these topics.
Okay. So.
But I don't think we have to amend it.
No, we don't prevent it.
No, we just, and then they, they rejected it, so we would have to argue from the floor that it should be considered.
Okay.
And, okay, it's that, that it should be considered, so.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, in the way that this is presented, the rationale, I mean, there's several paragraphs here of rationale to support, right? And the only thing that the resolution committee says, that they recognize the importance, but should not be mandated. I mean, that's their only sen, that's the only sentence against it.
Well, if I understood Dr. Jacobowitz correctly, he's suggesting that we should argue that it should be mandated in the changing demographics.
Right, so we, so we want to support it, I mean, we want to go along with him.
So, but we're gonna have to support it from the floor, because this one is by rejected, not considered, so you're gonna bring it up to microphone and actually, um, give a rationale for why it should be.
And they have a lovely rationale.
They do. We have to rebut it.
So, so, so it's not gonna be presented?
That's what's supposed to come with a lot of our boards. The committees, the committees rejection of it is very weak, they pretty much just say, yeah, no.
Yeah, no, we're not.
It's a good idea, but.
All right, how many of us are in favor of, of supporting the rejected resolution nineteen?
And half the base will get up. Whoever the argument, just fly to it.
Yeah. Okay, and then, uh, ninety, ninety, you wanna strike, or you want to turn one twenty?
Just for clarification.
Yes.
When they say that it's not recommended, does that mean it's not gonna be brought up to the floor?
Unless some, uh, participating district brings it up.
Which half the base is going to obviously.
Right, because they, because this is actually done by two districts, right? Is it Shenandoah and supported by Henry Bay, so I think, well, there you go, there are two of them.
And there's a training, um, eleven thirty, the day before, uh, the annual meeting itself. They'll cover that, or how that, how you support, I mean, it's been rejected by the NISP, uh, resolution committee. So, now it's around to kindergarten.
Right.
Yes.
I like the idea of, you know, changing the day, to September fifteenth, you know, I would agree with, especially if you tend to giving out the waivers, because you open up the kind of wars if you get that authority. But I don't like the resolution changing the day, because a kid is losing a whole school, maybe two weeks, although he's not five, but he's not four either. So, eh, you know, bringing up the day a couple of weeks later, you know what I mean, to be able to.
To September first?
No, September fifteenth.
Well, it says, it's sooner than five, before September fifteenth.
That's the other one.
They're, they're saying option.
I had a question about that.
Yeah.
For the superintendent, do you now provide waivers based on date?
Yeah.
See, I'm supportive of it without a waiver.
I agree with that, Mrs. Wilson.
Because I agree.
We have to make sure, we have to do that with how, okay, and it can work, it should be.
Excuse me? I'm sorry. What did you say? I, I think children should be five on their first day of school, in kindergarten. I think it, there's, when you're only five, those four months are, you know, major.
Sure.
And I just think that it's, it's problematic to have the option of a waiver.
Well, when was it changed to September fifteenth?
It, it, it has, this was proposed.
That's the proposed.
They're proposing it, but they rejected, NISP rejected December first.
December first.
December first.
And how long is it to September first?
No, December.
December first.
December first.
First time for Memorial, I mean, as long as I can.
Forever.
Yeah, forever.
But this is probably about these, this is moving fast.
Right, this is what they were recommending.
This is, the district has the authority to make this different decision. He can choose a different day if he wants, we use December first.
And I'd like you to choose September.
I'd like it to be September first, the student would be five, it's September first. The rationale against it, though, spoke to, um, students becoming ineligible for free pay programs, which is a real consideration for working parents, and, uh, that it would provide a lot of beginning of the year hassle for the superintendent, who has to decide whether or not, um, he or she is going to approve a waiver. So, with everything else going on, we want that as well.
Well, if we can do it locally, then we probably have more of a shot.
Well, locally, it's a state problem.
But I think it's important, I mean, if we're doing these, I think it's important to make statements, yeah, so, we believe it should be earlier, September first, and I think we should say that.
But I'm not in favor of the waivers, because I think that then you're caught up in that. The reason that I would support it is because educationally, I think it's best for children to be developmentally ready for school. And, you know, now, is it true that a child who's five, September first cannot go to preschool? The year before?
The year before then.
Yeah.
They can, the year, like, if they turn five and go to preschool.
I'm looking at Dr. Olson, she will appreciate some of that.
Just for clarification.
Okay.
So, we, we set the day as December first, so, how it works is with, um, with our UPK providers, um, and we begin that December first, same cutoff like four-year-olds, so if they are eligible for kindergarten, then they're, they can go to preschool, but they, they can't be part of the UPK program, which is.
But if the state changed the cutoff to September first, wouldn't that just move everything down from the UPK?
If the state changed the cutoff, we changed the cutoff, and then they changed the cutoff for, yeah, for preschool.
Right.
Yes, but right now, we change our cutoff.
But the state does it.
Right.
The state, the UPK state, the UPK cutoff, the UPK file, as far as states reserve the funding for parents who get.
So then that would be important, that it be happening at the state level.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. All right, so.
Mr. Olson?
Sorry. Just one other little, uh, point about this, is that if you did this in one year, um, there would be likely about a twenty-one percent decline in your kindergarten class of that year, because that's about the period of time that you're gonna be taken away from the year that you're taking kids from, your cohort would shrink by, I say, a hundred kids that year that you did it. So, if you did this slowly.
If you phased it in, it would be better.
But at one shot, that would be.
Good point, yeah. So, that, that should be included, it should be amended, to phase it over.
Yes.
For you, thanks.
It should phase it over.
It should go to, like, November first, then October first.
Yeah.
Oh. Should have changed to November first.
Were that true?
That's how I would have it phased. So, would like to support resolution twenty, but to death, these days ain't over four years. We just want to say no, and we're gonna new resolution.
Yeah, I think that's the.
The district.
I think it's, yeah.
Dr. Olson, I'm going to.
I think that's the.
This is not, I mean, this is, I mean, I think I remember suggesting once, I read an article, it was an article that, that hockey, all-star hockey players were all born, uh, before June first, because that, that's when they get the most attention. They're big, and they're strong, and the coaches favor them. So, if you're born in the last half of the year, you're a pipsqueak, and you don't get any attention from your coaches.
It's a very, it's a very, it's a very, uh, common conversation around sports, about the, the June, children versus the October.
But it could be, um, a common conversation around academics, too.
Well, I, but as far as that, when I, when I thought, when I mentioned that, I, you know, I came up with the idea that, you know, we should have bifurcated kindergarten, you know? Some start, if you're born from January to June, or July first, you, you start in September, and you're born from July first to December thirty first, you start in, you start in January.
We have, I don't have real estate.
You can, you can, I mean, at some point, it doesn't make a difference, certainly a five-year-old doesn't make a difference.
Okay, so, resolution twenty, we don't like the way it's written.
Yeah, I think we should not support this, and then maybe try to create a new resolution.
So, we're gonna support it, we'll support nineteen, um, but, and defend that, but no, I think, okay. We're going, we're going. Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Anybody want to say anything else about the resolutions? Thank you. All right, is there any old business that any trustee would like to raise at this point? Any old business? Mr. Shaughnessy?
I'm gonna bring up a resolution, that's, that's meaning we adopted as one of our goals, of increasing diversity in our staff.
Right.
And, uh, I was talking to one colleague, and I said I would make, you know, I would have more to say about that. And then on Monday, in the New York Times, there was an article by some, some colleague I went to, that says diversity, does teacher diversity matter in student learning? So, rather than offer my own opinion, I can say, there's a New York Times article that says, it does make a big difference, especially, um, for boys, and boys of color, and in grades three to five, because, you know, they see white female teachers, and, um, when they see at least one, at one kind in their academic career, they see, they have someone in front of the class that looks like them, both in terms of gender and color, it increases their, um, likelihood of, of finishing school, or finishing, graduating, and even going to college. So, um, and, you know, I think maybe it's a good, you know, so, maybe we should also, um, tell our, or, or, support our, our male students that elementary education is a worthwhile occupation for them to aspire to.
Absolutely, yes.
That's why.
Thank you, thank you for sending us the link to the article, I didn't consider any more.
Yes, I did.
Um, great. Is there any other old business? Okay, new business? Dr. Jacobowitz?
We should all get out and vote for the legislature.
Since the election day, we should all get out and vote, for the later, we need to get out and vote, whatever primary is in our area.
Thank you very much. Yep, primary day tomorrow.
Public education is a sample of democratic society.
Okay.
I would just like to ask them, you know, when we can visit schools, board members, if you're finding that interesting.
I will just send out an email to the principals. You know, in the past, they designated days, other times they just said, whenever you want to come, please send me, I'll just give them a warning.
But you still want to, you know, let the superintendent know that you're entering the building following policy, but, yes.
Following up on that, we were just having a brief conversation before the meeting, and I wonder if we can do cookies in conversation, maybe in the cafeteria of the schools, to just meet with the kids informally.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
We have free sugar cookies, right?
Yes.
We give cookies for kids.
Well, if they're parents, parents in conversation.
It would be, it would be, it would be a good opportunity in the, learning after the bell, and the, the extended school day in middle schools, because there are students sitting there, they're, I mean, so it wouldn't be pulled out since we were doing it like last time. Elementary students, sometimes hard to keep them, keep them after, but yeah.
I'm thinking more in the high schools and middle.
Yeah.
Again, student, but.
Well, we can do-
Any other? Any other new business? Thank you. All right, board member announcements. Mr. Shaughnessy?
So, last Friday evening, I was working the chains at Pete Stadium, and really didn't have to move back and forth very much, because I think there were probably four times as many touchdowns as there were first downs. And Kingston won by a score of sixty-two to fifty-nine, even being down 28 points in third quarter, so it was, it was quite exciting.
Yeah, I read the coverage in the paper, it was exciting.
Between the two quarterbacks, there were a thousand yards in passing. Wow.
Five hundred and sixty yards.
And what, do you get touchdowns?
In your section, I heard, I'm sorry.
My quarterback got, got two or three touchdowns rushing.
Is he? Wonderful. Any other board member that's-
I just want to, I think we should just thank all of the faculty and staff and administrators who have done so much planning to start the school year off in a positive fashion, I really appreciate it. And I know how hard, I mean, it's hot for everyone, but I know a lot of teachers who've been in all summer, you know, working in their rooms preparing, so I really appreciate that.
Okay, I have two quick announcements. The first one is, we do have a silter secured for our retreat on October 17th, so plan on that. I have, I think I put in the annotated calendar, it would, I have it for the 17th. We had to bypass the 3rd because it is back to school night, so we don't want to be otherwise engaged if you want to get out back to school night. So please take a look at your calendar, back to school nights, and attend. Also, yeah, that's the next thing.
I did add today, the Boys and Girls Coliseum, they were very excited to have you come there on February. Have not, I sent out a few letters last week, so that was my first response back from them. And on November 5th, we've added the Elster Immigrant Defense Networks, we'll have a region that is-
Right, and it's on Grand Street.
Yes.
Mr. Peres, can you send us that list?
I have them printed here for you, but I can email them as well.
We can now have that.
Do you want to pay the tab?
There is also, actually, which might be helpful, because any other child that is still working there, there are some dates that I put together-
Anybody?
That don't conflict with other things that are in the district, that we're still trying to fill those gaps.
Yes. Thank you very much.
This one of the options?
Yes.
All right, so our slots are filling up quickly. Mr. Peres sent out a letter last week inviting all of the suggested venues to schedule a public conversation with the board, so you'll see some on here that we haven't had on before, and I'm sure we'll get more to come, but, but that's one of them, so. Please talk to anybody you'd like to speak to about the district at other times, that'd be fine, too.
So do you want us to just let you know about it, or do you know?
Well, we're still working on the calendar, and, yes, if you know that you can be available for some events, definitely let me know.
Well, just know that there's some that I can't do, so if I can pick someone off and I can, I'd rather do that.
And then, I did have a question about the January, because that was the one week that we could do it, given all the different holidays and things going on. But we also have a retreat scheduled on the 16th, and I didn't know if we wanted to do two events, and, I was trying to avoid that, but in January, that, we might get two of us or, will we do that?
Social.
Okay, so if I can get somebody in January, that would be okay.
Okay. Okay. All right. So we still have April and May open. Right, yeah. I think we will. Okay. All right, we've reached the portion of meeting where we welcome public participation once again, second opportunity. If there's anyone who would like to approach the podium and address the board, at this point, the parameters are the same as they were for the first public participation, so is there anyone who would like to address the board? All right, hearing, hearing no takers, alert to the motion to adjourn. All those in favor?